...meeting of November 21st, 2012 is called to order. You have the roll call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here. All present. We are going to take a short recess and reconvene in the council chambers in about ten minutes due to the amount of people we have that may want to speak or we might not have enough chairs here. So, we're going to recess for ten minutes and reconvene in the council chambers. (pause) November 21st is back in session. The first thing I'd like to do is introduce the new city manager, Mr. Brian Kishnik. We have a formal ceremony set for Monday, but I thought it would be best just to welcome Mr. Kishnik. And it's been a great three days since he started on Monday.[427.61][427.61](Laughter) I think he earned his money for two months now and three days, but (inaudible). Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just a couple of house clean things before we get started. If you intend on addressing the council at the public comment, please review the rules of procedure that are in the agenda because those rules will be strictly enforced. And as you know, if you've been here in the past, you have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, that means that you have about one minute left, so please take that into consideration. I'd like to indicate that councilmembers Henderson and Fleming called this special meeting, but I want you to know that I think everybody at this table, including the city attorney and the city clerk, welcomes the opportunity to have an open discussion and be in an open forum to respond to the letter from the director of elections. So, having said that, I would generally turn the floor over to Councilman Henderson and Councilman Fleming, but if you would like to have City Attorney Bloom make a statement, we can do that, so whatever you want. Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Henderson and I had an opportunity to meet with a city attorney and others on Monday, just to try to get a handle and get out in front of this situation that we have because I think we were all surprised to receive the letter from Elections Bureau and a little disappointed in that. So, our city attorney brought us up to speed on Monday for Councilman Henderson and I, but maybe you've got more information you could share now because based on the information that was shared with us at that meeting, we felt that a meeting of the entire council was necessary. So, Ms. Bloom, if you have more information you'd like to share, we'd like to hear that before we move forward.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, is it okay if I proceed?
Please.
Okay. The Secretary of State, the Director of Elections, has sent us a letter of guidance, and that was received this past Friday, November 16th. I want to make it clear that this letter does not have the force of law. It is a guidance letter. "The interests of the Secretary of State are different than the interests of the city of Troy. The state is best served by having a uniform policy for all their elected positions. The city is best served by a procedure that provides stability while still ensuring that the voters have their say on their elected officials. The temporary appointment policy outlined by city administration in September provides for this. Legal analysis is more than just reading one statutory provision in isolation. It requires knowledge of constitutional provisions and other statutory provisions, including the Home Rule Cities Act, the entire election law, and also our city charter. When there are two possible interpretations under election law, then it is our obligation of city administration to use the statutory interpretation that allows the city of Troy to comply with both state law and also our city charter. If we were to follow the Secretary of State's guidance, which recommends a February special election, then our citizenry's right to run for local elected office would be impaired by the compressed timeframe. We want to assure the public that we, the city of Troy, will do everything possible to ensure fair, open, and accessible elections. We also want to assure you that we did not do our research in a vacuum. In September, prior to presenting our procedure fulfilling the vacancy arising from a successful recall, we consulted with the Oakland County Clerk, which is our first level of inquiry for election questions. The Oakland County Clerk's Office agreed with our analysis and our recommended procedure, and I'm sure Clerk Aileen Bittner can address any questions that you have concerning that matter." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Councilman Henderson, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
Only that in this process of putting the meeting together, requesting the meeting, you know, there's been a lot of finger pointing and blame, you know. When did the letter come in and how was the letter motivated? And I just want to take the opportunity now to say that the finger pointing really needs to stop. I don't care, you know, what situation we're looking at in Troy, but the last years just seem to be so volatile on so many fronts that we just, we need to step back, take a breath, allow the process to work through itself, and, you know, if that means we need clarity from a higher authority, we need clarity from a higher authority. If that means we plunge ahead with the track that we're on, that means plunge ahead. But this meeting was strictly intended to address the letter that was submitted Friday and try to get that clarity.
I think in an orderly fashion, if each council member has some questions that they would want to ask of the city attorney or the city clerk, we can proceed with that. Councilman Campbell, do you have any questions?
No, I think we've had enough conversations with the city attorney to know what the proper position is, so I think we're ready. As far as I'm concerned, we're ready to move forward.
Councilman Fleming, did you have?
Yeah, if someone else wants to speak, give them a time.
Councilman Teetz, did you want to speak?
I'll pass for the time being.
Okay. Councilman McGinnis, is there some questions or something that you want to say?
I didn't know if the city clerk wanted an opportunity to chime in also. I know that this is a process that's been publicized twice within our own meeting agenda. It's also been publicized in the newspaper, at least since back in September. That's when we really started to make the procedure clear as to what would happen if the recall was successful, not knowing what would end up happening. And I know that this is something that we looked to the city attorney and to the city clerk for advice as well, so I wanted to give the city clerk an opportunity to chime in if there was anything that she thought would be important for us to know as well, other than what we already have information-wise.
Ms. Bittner?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, to touch on something the city attorney spoke about, this was, this process was not developed in a vacuum. It was developed based on charter and state law and in consultation with the Oakland County Clerk's Office Elections Division, who all along the way, as we regularly consult with them, that is our consulting authority for election questions or election issues that arise. And in this matter, we also consulted with them regarding not just the recall election itself, but what to do after the recall election. We clarified with them what our procedure was. They had no objections to it. And likewise, in my research, I did consult the city clerks or the village clerks from a number of other communities who had also experienced a local elected official recall. And one such community was a village called Taconsha, who had recalled, who had a recall election in February of 2012, where they recalled a council member, and they formed a committee after the recall was successful. They appointed a replacement council member in April of 2012 to serve until the November 2012 election, where the regular seat was up for election as part of their regular election cycle. So, based on what the city attorney and I interpreted through the charter and through state law, as well as examples from other communities, that's how we developed this process.
Thank you. Did you have any follow-up questions?
Well, I think it's a little difficult to have a conversation here just because we're dealing with a letter that's given us a position from the Secretary of State, but I think it's important to know that, and anyone that's read the letter can see that it's, that there's really several resources that we had to look at, and there are several sources that are cited from in terms of law, so the issue is not black and white, a city issue versus a state issue. It's, there are quite a more, quite a few more moving components on that note, and I just wanted to point that out. I don't know if that's something that the city attorney wants to discuss in any detail at this point. I know it's something that we've all spent time researching individually, so I'm not sure if there are any other questions other than that, but I think that there's a, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. I think that that, I apologize. I think that that may be something that needs to be discussed as well. I don't know if there are any questions, but I think that there's a, some misinformation out there that it's a simple issue, that's just a city versus a state issue, and it's really quite, quite more, it's more involved than that, so I wanted to bring that up and ask the city attorney if she wanted to comment on it.
City Attorney Bloom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, you're right. Recall fortunately has not happened very frequently in the state of Michigan. The examples are very limited, and there is ambiguity. Obviously, we reached a different interpretation than what the Secretary of State has reached, so there is ambiguity. Both sides are supported. I can understand both of them based on the law that's out there, but because of that ambiguity, we certainly are willing to work with the state legislature in getting amendments to this recall, to this recall law. We think that that is absolutely appropriate. We're happy to do that. In fact, I know that they are considering other amendments to the recall law, and this could easily be incorporated in their legislative process.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming, did you, I have some questions. You can go before me if you'd like, though. Would you like to go next?
Yeah, I've got a number of questions. Since the meeting that Councilman Henderson and I had with the city attorney and the city clerk on Monday, have either of you spoken with the Christopher Thomas from the state or from the Attorney General, or have we attempted to obtain another opinion from any other respected municipal law attorneys?
No.
I have a question for Ms. Bittner. Could you give us a timeline for the February 2013 election, if it would have been held?
According to the statute that's been cited, you, there would be a 15-day window after the certification of the recall, which occurred on November 9th. The 15-day window closes on November 26th. That's the filing window where interested parties could file for, run for that office if they wished. As required, we would have to put a notice in the newspaper, a newspaper record. The notice for that news, in that newspaper record would have to be sent to the newspaper on November 12th, and that notice would be published on November 19th. So, the notification to, our official notification would be in, would have been in the paper on November 19th, which, as you know, would be a week before the close of the filing window.
It's my understanding that you cannot deviate from that timeline whatsoever. It's, it's...
That, those fif, that 15 days, that 15-day window is set forth in that statute. It cannot be deviated from.
Okay. So, City Attorney Bloom, it would be impossible to have a February election. That's your opinion?
There would be a violation of our charter.
Of our charter?
If we were to proceed.
Okay. For Ms. Bittner, are the recall election results certified?
Yes.
Okay. Could this, could the recall election be overturned?
No, that's not possible.
It's not possible?
No.
Okay. You know, this is a very simple decision for me. You either support the city attorney and the city clerk, or you support an opinion letter from the director of the state elections, okay? I'm confident that our city attorney and the city clerk researched this issue very thoroughly months and months and months ago. Okay? And gave us their best recommendation for Troy. So, I haven't heard anything, I haven't seen anything to deviate from, from my support of the process that started six months or so ago, and it's important to me to know that there was support from the Oakland County Elections Division. And Ms. Bittner, if you could just, you have contact with the Oakland County Elections Division almost daily. Is that not true?
That's correct.
And you've consulted with the Oakland County Elections Division throughout this whole process?
That's correct.
And they have supported our, your position. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. They've, they've indicated that, that our process is in accordance with our charter and does not violate state law.
And the Oakland County Division never told us to hold an election in February, did they?
No, they did not.
Okay. And they would be the ones to tell us to hold an election. Is that correct?
Under, under the law, only the Oakland County Clerk or a circuit court judge could call an election, and as of this date, the Oakland County Clerk is not called an election for February.
There is a community, you mentioned earlier, that the exact same circumstances occurred.
That's correct, the village of Taconsha.
And they followed the procedure that you, you and the city attorney have recommended?
And in that case, they, I spoke with that, the village clerk there, and they formed a committee. The committee worked with the county clerk's office, much like the same exact procedure that we followed. They came to the conclusion that they would appoint someone to fill the seat in April, then that person would sit in that seat until November, when the regular election would occur anyway.
And you've spoken with, with them, did you say?
I spoke with the village clerk there, yes.
Did they ever get a letter from the director of the state elections?
I spoke with the clerks of, there's, like the city attorney had indicated, this doesn't happen very often, so the list of communities that this happens in is very limited, and I spoke with the clerks in those communities, and none of the clerks in those communities had a letter from the state election director directing them to do anything with their post-election, post-recall election.
So, this is the first time that this director has ever sent a letter to any city regarding an issue like this, as far as you know?
From what, from the clerks, of the clerks that I spoke with, my experience, I haven't heard of this occurring, but I don't want to say ever because I don't know that, but my experience, what I've spoken with, this is not, they did not have this happen to them.
Okay. And lastly, yeah, for me, legally upholding the charter is paramount, I think, with me and I think with everyone here on council. And when the city attorney and the city clerk recommend that we follow this process because if we don't follow this process, we're going to violate our charter, to me it becomes a no-brainer, that we are going to, we should follow the recommendations so we don't violate our charter. So, having said that, if anybody else has any comments, I just have one other thing to say. Councilman Fleming?
Yes. I have tremendous respect for our city clerk and for our city attorney. I think I've demonstrated that 95% of the time or greater, I've agreed with the recommendations of our city attorney. This time, I do not. Fortunately, in this country, I believe we have a hierarchy of authority, and in this country, we're governed and led by the rule of law. This does not mean that government statutes and laws are always the most efficient or the most economical, but we are obligated to abide by the statutes and laws, and if we do not, there are consequences. It is my belief in reading this letter that the state statute trumps both the county and the city charter unless specifically stated otherwise, and that the city, the state attorney general has the authority to interpret and enforce the laws and statutes of this state. Having said that, I have prepared a resolution that I would like to get on the table for a vote and discussion, for discussion and vote. The resolution I've prepared reads resolved that Troy City Council hereby directs our city attorney to contact the state attorney general on Monday, November 26th, 2012, regarding the subject, "November 16th, 2012 Letter from Christopher M. Thomas," and seek the legal opinion of and direction from the state attorney general on this matter as soon as possible, which this council will accept as final and binding.
I can't remember the complete motion, but moved by Councilman Fleming and supported by Councilman Henderson, the resolution read into the record by Councilman Fleming. Before we have discussion, I would ask the city attorney if this is a proper procedure to have at a special meeting, if you could address that?
Actually, our, our rules do require for special meetings that are called, that it be limited to what is in the call. However, we could quickly do something, since all of the members here are present, we could have a brief recess. I could get something in writing so that we could be permitted to have this added to the agenda and have you act on this particular item. Again, our special meetings, because they're not at the regular time, they're designed to provide all citizenry with an idea as to what actions would be taken at a special meeting. But certainly, we can, if, if council wants to recess, I can, we can facilitate that being able to happen. I also, Mayor, would like the opportunity, if we do get to that point, to address the resolution as has been stated.
Thank you. I don't have any problem dealing with this. Is there a reason why we couldn't deal with this Monday? Do you feel it's important that we have to deal with this today? Councilman Fleming?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think timing is critical here. We've already demonstrated that February the 26th is in jeopardy. I, maybe it takes some time for the attorney general to render an opinion. I think we need to have some direction as to whether this is resolved on Monday night or not. That would be great if we could get that. That's why I've asked for this contact to be made Monday, in consideration for the meeting Monday night. I don't know how the eternal general, general will react. A compromise could be that we have an election in May, but I think it, in my mind, it's certain we're going to have an election before November, based on what I'm reading. So, it could be we have to get some opinion, and that's why I wrote this the way I did, seek the legal opinion and of and direction from the state attorney general, because I think probably the ship has sailed on February the 26th, but maybe, I'm not a lawyer, maybe the eternal general would make an exception, give us an extension of time which would trump the charter. I don't know that. I'm not going to try to put words in his, his mouth, but I think timing is of the essence. We need to deal with this now, not wait until Monday. We've got, we'd losing a whole day on Monday if we do in fact have to have an election on February the 26th.
Well, the only reason I brought that up is that the city attorney hasn't had an opportunity to, to look at this and maybe need some time. You didn't share this with, with me, so I don't know if anybody else at the table saw this, so if you want to do it tonight, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for recess so we can at least take a look at this. Councilman Fleming?
Yes, just for the record, no one else on the, at council has seen this. I wrote this myself on my personal computer today, and so no one else on council has had an opportunity to see this.
Okay. We'll take a recess and be back at 2:35. We'll take a recess and be back at 2:35. Welcome back. We have a resolution on the table that was moved by Councilman Fleming and seconded by Councilman Henderson, and I'd like to give the city attorney an opportunity to address the resolution and explain what we just did as far as signing the document.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as what we just did, we provided consent, all of the council members did consent to allow for an addition to the agenda, which, since all of you are present, is something that, that we did. But it had to be in writing, so thank you for, for allowing the time to complete that procedural element, so that we are in compliance with our, with our charter. The, I, I did just have a couple of concerns about Councilman Fleming's request, and I guess one of my largest concerns is, I'm worried about the precedent that it would set if we allow for an attorney general's opinion to be binding. Because there are occasions when we may disagree with the attorney general, and the attorney general, again, just like the secretary of state, they issue opinions, but they do not have the in-depth knowledge of our city charter that, that we do, working here in the city of Troy, and we are intimately familiar with it. So, I do have a concern with that. I also have a larger concern about the timing. Monday is the day of the filing deadline, if, if a February election were to occur. And so if we go to the AG's office, again, it's a holiday, so we won't be able to do it until Monday, I'm very concerned that they would not have their opinion issued before the 4:00 PM deadline for a February election. Also, yeah, I guess, the other item to Councilman Fleming, you indicated that perhaps the attorney general could give us some leeway with the filing deadlines. That is just not possible under state law, and maybe I misinterpreted that, but that is not something that can happen. The attorney general cannot give us a delay in the filing deadlines. It's, it is just not possible.
Is there any other members of council that want to speak on this resolution? Mayor? Councilman Henderson?
Yep. I, I like having the ability to try to get a resolution to this thing. As, as I mentioned early on, you know, we need some clarity in this. I, I also have great respect and trust in, in the city attorney. In May, I think it was May, it could have been April, I sat down with her at length and discussed the process, and I was completely satisfied with the process at that time. And, and I knew full well, going into the recall situation, and even in the September meeting that we had, and I think in November we even addressed it again, that the, the line was pretty well-defined in what we had to do. This new letter that was presented to us on Friday presents us with another situation. And, you know, I've, I've spent 30 years in, in industry that was fraught with fraud and, and lawsuits brought against people that sold franchises, and I've been able to keep myself personally from, from being named in any of those lawsuits, and I'm fairly proud of that. And I don't intend to have this position be the first case for me. And to that end, I, I don't, I don't know, maybe we change direction here a little bit in the wording of this, but I, I fully expect us to be able to go somewhere and have somebody give us a determination, is the city correct or is the state correct? And there's gotta be some, some way to do that. I don't know if we're, we're gonna miss the February deadline, I don't know if we have to defer to the, the next possible election in May, I don't know if we continue on the path that we're going on, I don't know what that resolve is gonna be, but we need a resolve. I am not willing to put my name on anything that is not 100% legal in the eyes of whoever that governing body is that, that, that governs this particular topic for us.
Councilman Campbell?
Yeah, Councilman Henderson and Councilman Fleming have both sat here within the last few minutes, saying how 95% of the time, we believe everything she says, until we get a letter, which nobody knows how we got the letter, where the letter came from, who requested the letter, but we got a letter, now all of a sudden, because perhaps some people up here want things to change as far as leadership in the city, now she's not trustworthy, now she doesn't know what she's doing. And I'm very, I'm really bothered by that, not only for me personally, but also all the people in Troy who are watching this. Now, we had a meeting a week ago, and everybody was, you know, though you weren't happy with the outcome, you were set up, as you said, that was fine, we moved on, I thought this was all done. Now, all of a sudden, there's a big uproar, and I'm kinda curious, on number one, how we got here and how we're gonna get past this. Personally, I believe in her, I think the attorney has done the proper job, you certainly are not an attorney, nor am I, Wade, and I read through all this stuff, and I am trusting her opinion, her legal opinion, very honestly, over your legal opinion at this point, and I will side with the city attorney of Troy.
Councilman Teetz?
I agree with Councilman Campbell. I don't know how the, this letter came about, but I don't disregard it just because I don't know that. I guess it's kind of an inconvenient truth at the moment that this letter is here. We were told that the memorandum that you requested, Councilman Campbell, on the, boy, the 27th, this is the process, and it had been reviewed and been seen as a black and white answer. This is how it's gonna happen. Since then, you know, we've had some deviations from that process. Initially, we're gonna have an irrevocable letter of resignation if someone needed to resign and run from the council, and, and at the time, that seemed fine, and so we, we made that change. And at that time, we didn't have a concern, or there was, I never heard anyone express a concern that somehow the public wasn't aware of this change, but that was a small change. And now, this letter from the secretary of state and from Chris Thomas, who's the, the state's election director, and that raises additional concern. And so, I think it's wise, when there's new facts, we review and analyze how we, we handle those facts, rather than just say, I'm gonna disregard this because of, it doesn't fit with what I'm interested in. Therefore, I am interested in knowing what the attorney general's opinion is. I think there, it is correct that there are some spots between the charter and what the, the state law is that aren't exactly clear, but it always troubles me when the front page of the Detroit News is talking about Troy, you know, facing lawsuit, or we're head, you know, butting heads with the state about things like this. And it makes me have, wanna think over or review what, what, what direction we're going in. So, you know, like I said, sometimes it is inconvenient when things like this come up, and certainly this time of year, it is inconvenient as we're preparing for Thanksgiving and so forth, but I think it's worthy to ask the attorney general for some opinion, and I, I think it also makes sense that, that we investigate that now. So, with that, I'll be voting in that direction.
Councilwoman McGuinness?
Well, and I just want to backtrack on something that Councilman Teetz just said. The idea that we've received this letter and have not taken another look at this, I think is not correct. In fact, I would imagine, since we've received this letter on Friday, I know what I did this weekend, I'm pretty sure I know what everyone else up here did this weekend, as well as our city attorney. And I know that there have been a lot of people that have weighed in and, and given opinions, there have been a lot of questions that have gone out to the county to make sure that, that everyone has really done their due diligence on this opinion. So I think we're sitting here today so that the city attorney can reinforce that, in light of this letter, this is still her opinion, based on her expertise, and I think that that's very important. I'm in the same profession as Lori Bloom, but I don't do the same type of legal work that Lori does. And if, if I'm not considering myself an expert in that area, I don't think that anyone up here should be considering themselves an expert in that area. So I do think that her opinion is very important. The one thing that I will say on this new resolution that is before us today, is that I don't really understand how we came to the conclusion that this would be the best way for us to go. We have an issue right now between our charter and state law, and there are actually multiple areas of the state law that we're looking at in order to come to the conclusion that we've reached with what the process should be. I'm not sure why we would ask the state to weigh in and give us their opinion. There have, there's historically been differences between what local control should be and what the state legislator thinks that their authority is to govern the communities. This is not the first time this has happened, and there's a place for us to have those differences resolved. That's in the court, who doesn't have an interest in what happens here, who doesn't have an interest in what happens in our community or at the state level. And that's the appropriate place for this to be decided if it comes to that. It's not sending it up and asking one body to essentially weigh in on an issue that affects themselves. I don't see how that is gonna be fair to us, I don't see how that's gonna be fair to our citizens. There's a reason that we have Home Rule City Act in place, and there's a reason that we take our charter from that. It's because somewhere, back when they were forming our constitution, they thought that the local government was the right place for decisions to be made regarding the people that live in this community. And I think that that's very, a very important part of the opinion that city attorney Bloom has given us, and for that reason, I'm standing by her opinion, and I'm standing by the process. There, there will be a process for this to play out if it, if it does, and that's the way I think that we should go.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming? Go.
Okay. Just for the record, it seems to be insinuated by, by some here, that I had something to do with this letter from the state. I had no idea I was as surprised as anyone else. This letter was received, I had no advance knowledge, I talked to no one about it, I accepted the fact that Mayor Slater had the position until the November election, so I was totally surprised by that, and I would take a polygraph in that regard. Okay? So, that, that is absolutely out of the question. I had nothing to do with that at all. But what does disturb me a little bit, and I've said that I respect our city attorney, and I do, but it disturbs me that since Monday, we've had no conversation with Christopher Thomas or with the attorney general or with any other respected municipal law attorney, because we can all need to bounce things off of other people. But we haven't done that, we're just relying on our local knowledge here, which is significant, but in my opinion, this, this case, based on this strong letter from the Department of State, it's not enough. I mean, I believe this person was very diplomatic, Chris Thomas, and diplomatic in writing this, this letter, and basically telling us, you know, what we need to do, that we're in violation of charter. But if we don't follow the recommendation or get some opinion on this from the attorney general, I think we're going to see a heavier hand from the state, and I'm one not wanting to see that happen. I'd rather get out in front of this, work on it, deal with it, get it resolved in a, in a timely manner, rather than dragging through the courts here.
Well, it boggles my mind that a council member would think-
Well, it boggles my mind that a council member would think that he knows or knows more than the city attorney, the city clerk, and the Oakland County Clerk's Division. So, I'm not gonna, I agree 100% with Councilwoman McGinnis stated that there is no reason not to support the research. Since we've gotten this letter on Friday afternoon at four o'clock in the afternoon, which is suspicious in its own right, we've been on the phone consistently with the city attorney, we've done our own due diligence, I think, here at the table too. So, I have the utmost confidence in our city attorney, our city clerk, that they've done their due diligence, and unless anybody has anything else to say, let's take the vote. The vote, Mrs. Bitner?
Mayor Slater?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
No.
Councilmember Teets?
Yes.
Motion fails. The next order of business is public comment. I am going to defer to Ms. Bitner that she has the names of the people that have signed up to speak at public comment. When she calls your name, if you could come up to the podium and state your name, whether you're a resident or a business owner, and keep in mind that you have three minutes, and please abide by the rules that are outlined on the agenda packet, because we will be enforcing those rules. So, I'm gonna defer to Ms. Bitner for, how many speakers do we have?
Twelve.
Twelve?
I'm sorry, fourteen.
Fourteen. So if you could, if I could defer to you for first speaker.
Dan Brake.
Good afternoon.
The six of you have sat here wondering how this letter could have just fallen out of the sky on Friday afternoon. Read the very first line, it opens, "This letter is a follow-up to our conversations. Would one of you please ask her what that's all about? There's clearly a background to this letter." In part, Michigan's election law reads at 168.931, "A person shall not willfully fail to perform a duty imposed upon that person by this act or disobey a lawful instruction or order of the Secretary of State as chief state election officer." That's a misdemeanor, probably punishable by ninety days and or $500. In another part, this same section reads, "A person shall not attempt by means of bribery, menace, or other corrupt means or device, either directly or indirectly, to influence an elector in giving his or her vote." That's a felony, five years in the big house. The city attorney, would you believe that it's too late to conduct a February election as we stand here on November 21st? It is the case that the city attorney had noticed that there was a serious question about the election date, at least as recently as November 8th, thirteen days ago. In the world where I come from, a reasonable executive would not necessarily have ordered the implementation on a question, but a reasonable executive in the business world I come from would have taken at least preliminary steps to be ready in case that worst-case developed. Yesterday afternoon, and again this afternoon, I stopped at the clerk's desk and requested the forms necessary for filing for elected office in the city of Troy, and was told those forms were not available and would not be made available. Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker.
Glenn Clark.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you here today. I am a resident of the city of Troy, and I found this week results published in local newspapers and other online sources is very disturbing. I find it very interesting that the state election statute is not being followed, and some on council have even implied that city charter essentially trumps state law. I've never seen that happen before, having worked in the legislature and other branches of government my entire career. The city attorney in her comments in one of the news outlets said that the state law essentially was not fair. I found that very interesting. If, in her professional opinion, it's not fair, she could address that to council, you could pass a resolution, because you speak through your resolutions, and have the legislature address that, or perhaps individually talk to the legislators who represent the area. Citizens of Troy demand the rule of law, and I'm seeing a fracture in that here today, and just because, Mayor, that you have confidence in a public official, and you're quite clear about that, does not mean that you have to always adhere to every ruling or opinion that give you, they're giving you their advice, it's not two stone tablets coming down from on high on a mountaintop. She mentioned that there was a compressed timeframe, I felt that comment was quite subjective, but I also feel that her comment regarding saying that the Secretary of State has a different, I think she said something to affect a different set of interests than ours. I know the Secretary of State, and I know Chris Thomas, who is a career public servant, who's from a different political party than the Secretary of State, and I find that very interesting, because they have the state of Michigan in our laws and the legislature being the people's representatives at heart. I read the election statute, someone emailed it to me, and ladies and gentlemen, it's crystal clear, and if, that begs the question, if our city charter is not in compliance with state election law, why did the city attorney not recommend to you all that we revise it or update it or change it? I'm not sure the procedure to that, maybe it has to go to a vote of the people, but I think a professional city attorney would have eyes on avoiding possible roadblocks or train wrecks, and I don't believe that that happened here. A proactive city attorney, I think, would have done that and recommended a course of action to protect the taxpayers of Troy. It's another question, would voters have chosen differently on election day regarding a recall? They were told, okay, thank you, appreciate that, if they knew two possible special elections related to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Nicholas Charasaw.
Good afternoon. How long is our city going to be run by a former mayor puppeteer? Along with the three puppets on the city council, this city has become a joke for this nation. The whole situation was started because the puppeteers' handpicked candidate lost the election in November 2011. They then did everything possible to get the winner out of office, to include making this city a joke, and now you people continue to do so. That's all.
Next speaker, please.
Jan Stein.
Good afternoon. I am extremely disappointed that certain council members felt the need to call this meeting today. As I said at the last council meeting, I look forward to supporting you as you work in harmony to keep Troy a destination point in southeast Michigan. Without harmony, we lose the momentum to achieve even minor accomplishments, and Troy will again be the center of unpopular national attention. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Ms. Spocksey.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members.
Good afternoon.
Here is what I have come after being involved in politics, now supporting different candidates, researching, et cetera, writing a book, is that there are two groups of people, one I would call liberals, liars, and those who are looking for truth. It's obvious, and Mr. Fleming just mentioned very clearly, that there has been not a lot of intention on the part of the city attorney to actually go find the truth and really research so that the Troy citizens and taxpayers are well-represented. It's interesting to me that one of the council members who actually signed the petition to recall Janice Daniels is sitting at mayor, wanting to obviously protect the turf. So my question to all of you who are here is, are you really interested in representing the voters, or are you interested in protecting the turf and the people who are supporting your campaign elections and donations? And that's all really my interest is, because I'm a Troy citizen, a voter who has interest in the John Q., and not really running for anything personally myself, all I'm looking for, clean place, which is obviously something. I heard somebody just say, "Work in harmony." Where was she last eleven months? Obviously, she wasn't interested in working in harmony with the person who was elected previously, so as soon as the person that she wants is there, she's in harmony. Well, that's what I talk about anywhere and everywhere, is that there are two types of people, and I will repeat that, because I will tell you, there are groups of people who are looking for truth like me, and we want to address that right now. Thank you.
Dan Coleman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Potem and council members. I have, I think it's real key to know exactly what type of documentation do we have that due diligence has been performed. I mean, I think that determines whether we have a case or not. Ignorance of the state law is obviously no excuse, and I think the taxpayer, or the voters are gonna wanna know, you know, can we prove due diligence? Is there documentation? Not, is there one opinion? That's all I heard, a letter of opinion? Is that the only due diligence we have? And that opinion satisfied our city attorney? Or is there more? Records of conversations? Is there people accountable for this? That's what I think we need to investigate and avoid a lawsuit if we don't have a case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Chamberlain.
Good afternoon. I'm troubled by all of this. We had a horrendous mess with the national elections, and I thought we were gonna be finally through with this. I sincerely believe that our city clerk and our city attorney did due diligence, and I accept their opinion. They said that this letter was an opinion, it was not legally binding. Well, if it's not legally binding, then for the sake of all those taxpayers, and for the sake of the healing of the city, I really wanna get on with the city, getting back to where it used to be. I don't care who's in charge personally, I don't know most of these people, I just want healing, and I want you to quit wasting the taxpayers' money on calling special elections and going through all this extra stuff. We really can't afford it mentally, we can't afford it financially. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gordon Shepki.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Potem, I appreciate the opportunity to come up here tonight. Like everyone up here has been talking, I believe in the rule of law, and I think that if we don't do everything in our power to look into every aspect, we're not gonna come up with a good outcome. It was my, I'm not a legal person, I'm just a taxpayer and lived here 42 years, but I wanna tell you right now, I thought everything in the charter and in the county had to fall in compliance with state law, and I thought state law had to fall into compliance with our constitution, I figured that's the way this country's set up. And when there's any question at all, any question at all, I think that this has to be looked into and not poo-pooed. This is too serious of a matter. Troy doesn't need to be tied up into some legal fighting later on that's gonna cost us a lot of money of duking it out in court. Another thing, the Supreme Court offers opinions, everything they come down with says, "In our opinion," and those opinions are binding, and if somebody in our state says it's an opinion, it's probably binding too. I think we ought to look into a little bit more. You know, all of us have been around the block a few times, so we know, we know what's going on here. We only, we can't agree with things only when they fit our agenda, we have to, we have to run this city for everybody, and right now, I think that everybody's got money at risk, as long as we take this letter and trash it, basically, the way the council, the vote went down tonight. And I appreciate the opportunity to come up here, I don't like a lot of the things that I've seen, so I'm withholding judgment until the state attorney general, who I think has the final say in Michigan, has their say, and I think you're gonna hear more from them. I don't know where this letter came from either, but I think it's gonna be very satisfying to the taxpayers to know what the path that they're on is the right one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barb Yeagley.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. I guess I have been a resident of the city of Troy for 25 years, and my recommendation to council and to the city attorney is to, or to have the city attorney get on the telephone and call the Attorney General and say, "Look, we got this letter, it's presenting a real problem to us, and we don't, you know, with the timing and all, we can't do this election, we, you know, would it be all right to just do it in November?" I would be in agreement with a November, but I also, as I asked previously, I would like you guys to seriously consider moving our elections to be on the even-numbered years so that we can be more in line with the rest of the elections going on, and then we'll have maximum participation, and we can get out of the cronyism that has been afflicting our fair city at this time. So, think about that, talk to the city attorney, ask her to get on the telephone, you could do that today, if we get out of here before four o'clock, and give the Attorney General a call and ask him, you know, you know, because I'd like to think that we can all be reasonable. This is what the goal is, let's start trying to act reasonable, and let's start acting like we assume that the people that we are dealing with are reasonable, and maybe we'll all start, you know, kind of raising our own standard of conduct likewise. So anyhow, have a good Thanksgiving, and may it be a blessed one for all of you and your families.
Thank you.
Ed Grechek.
I'd also like to wish you a happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and to continue with what she was saying, and to use the term someone else used, the puppeteers, the puppeteers aren't reasonable, that's the problem. The, this letter, you claim it's an opinion, and the city attorney claims that it's a guidance letter, but it cites a couple examples in that letter that went up to the Court of Appeals. Was it Lucas versus Vakano in Wayne County versus O'Hare? Those went to the Court of Appeals, I believe, so it's not so much a guidance letter, but anyways, talk about a laughing stock now, you guys, boy. You know, it's kind of ironic, too, that Mayor Daniels used the language from the state to get sworn in, and now you guys can't use the language of the state. She seems to know what she was doing at the time, I guess, huh? And you guys, and Jim Campbell, Dan Slater, and Maureen McGinnis, you guys sure do have your talking points down, along with Lori, the city attorney, your talking points are right to the point. You all seem to have the same thing that the puppeteers are espousing, so... So, I wonder who's right there. And I meant, Dane, Mr. Slater, when you, you're sitting on the board as elect to be mayor, I believe you have a conflict of interest in being, drawing a pension from the city and trying to negotiate contracts with the unions on the taxpayers' behalf. I'm a taxpayer here in Troy for 20 years, I pay the high taxes of Troy, and I believe that's a conflict, and I don't know who else is on the board that may have had a job here with the city, but to me, you guys should, and also, your term, when you called us, when you used the term crap, you probably should have resigned at that time. I'd like to say, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Toby Goslin?
I see lots of smiles. I found humor in that, was very entertaining, so thank you for the humor. Yes, my name is Toby Goslin, I'm new fresh eyes here. The sun has been shining on Troy ever since the recall of Janice Daniels, so there's a lot of message in that. Thank you, City Attorney Bloom and Clerk Aileen Bitner, your due diligence is respected. I know that you worked very hard on this, and I'm sorry you have to go through all this aggravation. The Oakland County Elections Division's provided legal guidance and detail before and after the successful recall of Janice Daniels. I have a fresh suggestion. I'd like you to call the Oakland County Elections Division. They know who requested this opinion. It's private, it's not public to me, but I'm wondering if maybe that would be something you would like to call Oakland County and ask who that person is. We have time-sensitive dates here that are expiring. If Ruth Johnson, Secretary of State, is so ethical and transparent, she must provide the Troy voters and the media with the name of the individual whose action caused this opinion from the Secretary of State election director. I'd like to bring attention, when Ruth Johnson placed that citizenship checkbox on the ballot, it was quickly reversed by a judge, so I don't know that I feel comfortable relying on Ruth Johnson's opinion on anything. I have a question for Mr. Fleming. If you were elected by your peers here on council to be the acting mayor until November 2013, would the Secretary of State have been asked for this opinion? I would like to know why now, at the end of the day, at 4:00 on a Friday, that a letter surfaced. There's a lot of giggling going on back there, but I think it's really important, and I'm sure you feel bad, I'm sure your eyes are wide open, and we voters are looking at you for guidance, we're looking at all the council people for guidance. I would like to request that we do not allow the state to come in and throw our city charter out. Our city charter is not a whimsical document, and I would like that you do not approve spending money that we don't have on an unnecessary February or May election. We don't need this. And I trust our city attorney and our city clerk for doing their job, and I thank you for all you do. Thank you. Have a really nice Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Michael Ross?
Good afternoon, thank you, and have a happy Thanksgiving, in spite of all this consternation. This recall process has caused great division here in our city, and the citizens here, we trusted that the US officials, you did your due diligence to set up this process, the election's done, a decision was made, and we should be able to go forward. And then, all of a sudden, this letter shows up, and it's very concerning. I thought this was a done deal. But here, the state is saying that they have concerns about the process, and they're showing us some information that they want us to give attention to. So, we heard a review here of the process by the city clerk and by the attorney of what was done in advance, and it's remarkable that they give us a history here of not a whole lot of familiarity with this recall statute and how it actually works, and there's not been a lot of experience, and there's not a lot of case law. So, I think it's remarkable that the only consultation that was sought was at the level of Oakland County, and that we didn't seek to go further to the state level to get more information to guide us. Now, I think it's standard practice for professionals, when there's a doubt about how to proceed, that you consult widely and liberally to make a good decision, the best decision possible. So, where we are right now, I think we have a lot of uncertainty and a lot of division, and the best way to handle all of that is let's get a clear authoritative decision on what the law is and how our city is supposed to follow it so that we can heal and move forward. And I think this would clarify a lot of the concerns about this side against the other side, and let's just be one united city, you know? We're one of the most important cities in Oakland County, and because of this recall process, the whole nation is looking at us. So, let's do the right thing. We have an opportunity to do that. Let's get in a higher authority, and I like the suggestion of the other Troy resident, of calling the attorney general's office today and getting them mobilized so that we can get a decision with alacrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Kaima?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. Wow. Here we are again, a lot of anger over the actions of the city and county. If we're going to mend the divide in this city, we've got to come together and support this city. We've heard from many armed chair attorneys. Personally, this entire thing is disgusting. Those arguing in defense of the letter from the state are so-called fiscally conservative individuals, and yet want more government interference. We are a home-rule city. These fiscally conservative people want a special election. Special elections cost money. That is fiscally conservative? These comments that we've heard tonight have been mean and vindictive. That is not a professional way to handle this. As a Republican, these people, to me, are an embarrassment to the party and the city. I agree with Councilwoman McGinnis. We don't have someone come in to give an opinion when they have a vested interest in the outcome. I thank Councilwoman Campbell, Slater, and McGinnis, and I wish you well. And I would hope that the small group that's causing this divide would stop and take note, and stop being rude in the audience and snickering when people are speaking. Thank you.
That concludes the people that have signed up. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. This meeting is adjourned with no action taken. We'll see you Monday night.